Of the Personnel Subcommittee of the Lowell Subcommittee, of the Lowell School Committee, rather, I'm sorry, if the clerk could call the rule.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Laraba?
Here.
And we also have Mr. Leary with us this evening, Mayor Melonazo, Mr. Leahy. And it is now six-ten.
Thank you very much. At our meeting this evening, we are going to be discussing ongoing plans for our superintendent search. I think first and foremost, it would be great if we could get an update from the administration where we are at this point. I know a great deal of work has been done, and I know that we can, we have a few things to update the Subcommittee and the full committee on.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Cassidy to speak to the Subcommittee about what's happened to this point.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to bring everybody up to date on the schedule and the timeline that we're following for our superintendent search. Since the last time we've met, the posting has appeared regularly in the Lowell Sun and the Boston Globe on Sundays. In addition, we've posted the superintendent position in Education Week. That was published on February 23rd and also March 2nd, which is today's edition. A special feature, as it's posted in Education Week, is that it is posted on their website and it is seen nationally and internationally. In addition, the, at the last school committee, you authorized funding for the administration to work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to do a mass mailing, and we've been working with them to do so. It's my understanding that that mailing went out at the end of last week, and that went out to approximately eleven hundred administrators throughout the state. That includes superintendents, assistant superintendents, and other curriculum administrators who are involved with that organization.
I would also like to just inform you that when we sent out the information to the Mass Association of School Committees, we had also developed a brochure that went along with it, so I do have copies of that. And the brochure states the qualifications, the requirements for the position, as well as some general information about the school system. I want to give you those.
Thank you very much. Just distribute those. Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Excuse me. What's the status of the, of the search consultants that we talked about?
The local recruiting companies that we've been dealing with really have not wanted to get involved because they're tied up with some of the searches. I think it was a motion by Mayor Melonazo at the last meeting to research national firms to participate in helping us recruit for our next superintendent. We've contacted about twelve agencies throughout the country, asking them to participate. We do have some information. It's incomplete, and it's our intent to make sure that goes out in your FYI packet this week.
Are there, I mean, are there positive responses to it? Is it, or not? From the consultants, is there a positive response, or are they tied up, or they don't want to do it, or on the national level? I understand the local level seems to be, you know, they seem to be busy, but the national ones?
The national groups, if we choose to, to work with those organizations, it's up to the Personnel Subcommittee and the School Committee on what type of services that they would be rendering for the district. At this point in the process, we're running out of time to do some recruiting, but many of these organizations can come in and assist the school committees with the interview process. They can assist you with developing questions, assist you during site visits, what you should be looking for, who you should be talking to. I know the School Committee went through this process about three years ago, but that, those are the type of services that they can provide.
I mean, I think that, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm just speaking for myself, I thought the whole idea was to get a consultant that was going to help bring qualified people in, not necessarily develop a pool of questions, but more a pool of candidates that we could, we could examine. I think that would be the, I mean, I think that the individuals here are certainly capable of coming up with the appropriate questions for our next leader in the school department. I personally would like to see the concentration on trying to bring some qualified people in that would apply for the job.
If I could just comment on that, it's really our goal to get qualified people for this whole process. I mean, it's the goal of the Personnel Department and the administration. We're after the same thing. As far as bringing in a consultant, we're going to have to extend the search if we're thinking about bringing someone in on the outside, so. No, that's it for you, no, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's actually very true. I mean, I think at this point, it's, you know, I think we were focused on the recruiter aspect of this, so, and I do think that, you know, it's one of the challenges we knew we'd face in having a very tight turnaround in this process. Can I ask, as, and realizing we haven't hit our deadline by any stretch, but do we have a number of how many applications we've received so far?
Yeah, I don't want to comment on where they came from, if we can respect that at this point, but we've got about two more weeks until the deadline of applications, and we've got four applications right now. I know that that's a little frightening, but from my understanding, previous searches and postings, a lot of these people, a lot of these applicants wait till the last minute to submit their application. And in part of the process, in what I've seen come through my office from the four applications, these are, these are heavy-duty submittals. These aren't just a resume and certification. I think the Blue Ribbon Committee and the School Committee is going to be very impressed if that formula is used for every single applicant, so it's, it's quite a bit of work for an applicant at this level to submit for a superintendent, so that's why the formula of a late submission or very close to the deadline is, we're probably on target for that.
I think that's very accurate also. I mean, that's certainly been my experience in the two different searches that I've been involved in, it's always that last, honestly, it's those last, like, three days before the end where they all kind of come rushing in. Mr. Conway?
Excuse me, that's what I was going to say, because I think that, you're absolutely right, just echoing what both of you said, that the experience that I had, it's that last forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, people waiting for a whole variety of reasons, perhaps they don't want to get their name out early, and that they want to wait to, again, the last minute. And again, as we've talked about, there's a lot of information that has to come forward in this process, and that does take time to put everything together, so I'm glad that you have received good qualified candidates at this particular point, and we certainly look forward to the, that last forty-eight, seventy-two hours with the flood of them coming in. Thank you.
Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I just wanted to know if we had heard any responses yet from invitations for the Blue Ribbon Committee?
I'm sorry, if we could maybe go through and complete the update, and then we can go to that?
Okay.
Thank you. I know the other topic we wanted to present, and I believe my colleagues have that, I don't know if everyone out there has gotten it, is the updated brochure that had gone out. Just to be clear, so this was developed and was used as part of that Mass Association of School Committees mailing? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's our general update on things. I know that, as Ms. Laraba said, the next pressing question would be the Blue Ribbon Commission. I would actually defer to the mayor, if he'd like to make his presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a copy of the list of the members of the Blue Ribbon Committee, and I'd like to thank Diane Bonowski from my office, who reached out, really at the direction of the School Committee, to the organizations listed on the left-hand side, and the appointees listed on the right-hand side, and we did receive the sixteen names, actually, I think the last name actually came in this morning. So according to the schedule that was put together at our last meeting, March 2nd is the day to publicly unveil the members of the Blue Ribbon Committee. So by organization, beginning with the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, we have Rithi Ong, the Citywide Parent Council, we have Kim Scott and Sydney Liang. From the Custodian Union, we have Michael Sheehan. From the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, we have Danielle Bergeron. From the Immigration Commission, we have Pastor Cecilio Hernandez. From Lowell Community Health Center, we have Dorcas Greg Sato. From Lowell High School, we have student Ashuredi Kamakala. From Lowell Plan, we have James Cook. Lowell Schools Administrators Association, we have Fred Abacy. From the Lowell School Department, we have Liam Skinner, principal. Middlesex Community College, we have Associate Dean Colleen Cox. Parents Special Education Advisory Committee, we have George Peterson. United Teachers of Lowell, we have Paul Georges and Kathleen McLaughlin. And from the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, we have Dean Anita Greenwood. And they've all agreed to participate in the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Excellent, thank you very much. Certainly, I know for all of us, we want to thank the mayor and your helpers, who made this happen in very short order, so we're very appreciative of that. And I think it's a really nice representative group, even just looking at it, it's certainly some people who've been involved with the school department in a lot of, you know, in a lot of different ways and for a great many years in some cases, and I think we've got a nice, it's great to see some diversity that really, I think, better represents our community. I don't know if my colleagues have any questions, concerns on the commission? Yes, Mr. Leahy?
I was just curious on the numbers, why two from the Teachers Union and City Parent Council? Any particular thought, or just the way it worked out?
Past practice, that that's what we get.
And it was that, yeah, that was what, at our, the initial meeting of the Personnel Subcommittee, we had kind of given the mayor a structure of how many from each organization we were looking for.
Correct.
Part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Hi, thank you, through you to the mayor. Have we determined who will be chair?
I have, yes, and the chair, and I'm pleased to announce that Robert Gilman, who recently retired, Executive Vice President from Enterprise Bank, has agreed to chair the Blue Ribbon Committee. As I think we all know, Bob actually started his professional career as a school teacher, and he had his wife Hildy, who was a longtime teacher in the system, recently retired, and for those of us that know Mr. Gilman, we know how dedicated he is to the Lowell community, and I know from his ten years on the Board of Trustees of the Library, as well as ten years as President of the LDFC Lowell Development Financial Corporation, I certainly know that he runs a good meeting, so I hope my colleagues are pleased with this election, because Bob Gilman actually hired me back in 1978, and he's been a friend and a mentor for a number of years, and I was thrilled that he agreed to, to chair the Blue Ribbon Committee.
That's great, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Doherty?
I just want to follow up, I think that's an excellent selection, and I want to really extend my thanks to all members of the Blue Ribbon Commission, who are going to be giving up their time to participate in this very important process, and as the chair mentioned, many of these names are familiar to us already, because they are active, involved citizens in the city, so my thanks to them for that commitment.
Any other questions, concerns on the Blue Ribbon Commission? Okay, well, we do have some time, and I think that one, something that we could, I think, bear some focus right now, would be our planning for the next steps, just so if we can lay down some groundwork now, I think, again, given our short timeframe, we'd really benefit from having some discussions about how we want to see the structure as we move forward. We certainly already discussed, we certainly already discussed how the Blue Ribbon Commission is going to function, they're going to have their opportunities to have their, their private interviews with the candidates they choose, and then we'd be receiving five recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission for us to then interview and make some final decisions on. Some of the things I'd like to discuss tonight, and I'll, you know, we can, we'll see how much we can get through, I think if possible, we should really try to nail down a date. We are going to need to, in the past, we've used this forum, the Committee Room, for those interviews, I think it's worked out great in the past, I don't know if there's any opinions on another location, or if we could be comfortable doing that here. It allowed us to televise it, it allowed us to kind of have an appropriate space for the, for the process. I'd also say, if we wanted to move forward in picking an actual date, I don't know who has their calendars, or maybe if the administration has some recommendations of when would work, based on the timeframe, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway?
Just a quick question on that, I thought that the last time we had these, the interviews, they were actually at the high school, not at this center.
I believe the Blue Ribbon Commission held their public interviews at the high school, and then we held ours here, I believe, though it's a little, memory's what it is, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, yes, Ms. Doherty?
If I could just comment on Mr. Conway's question also, I have a suggestion. The last search, the Blue Ribbon Committee interviews were public. This search, because of the timeframe, those meetings will be private, which, as the committee may recall, we will be able to sit in but not participate, just as observers, so that's why they were at the high school theater. I believe they were televised as well, but they're not public.
It was their second interview.
So this wouldn't be the same. And then, while I still have the floor, I was hoping that we could pick a date, maybe our next school committee meeting, to put on the agenda, an opportunity for the public to participate, tell us what they think is important in a superintendent, and actually, because, I mean, we do, we have opened it to the community in terms of the Blue Ribbon Committee, but to also hear from people who are not on the committee, who maybe would like to just tell us a few minutes, take, I mean, I'm not talking about this extensive thing, but anybody who wants to say, you know, I think this is really important, so as we go forward, planning our questions and all that, it helps to get that community feedback, so I would recommend that. I obviously can't make a motion, I'm not on the Personnel Subcommittee, but I want to throw it out for my colleagues to think about as an idea.
I think that's an excellent idea, and what I'd actually recommend is that if we want to put on the, put on the calendar now, a six o'clock, again, Personnel Subcommittee before the next school committee meeting, and we could use that point, you know, and have a public hearing in that, sorry, in that environment? Okay.
Can I just comment on that too? The other concern is if we did want to have it televised, I had spoke with the Superintendent Secretary about perhaps moving the Lowell High School Subcommittee meeting to that date, and we're just not sure that we can get, that LTC has the staff to televise a meeting earlier than our regular meeting. That would be just one glitch in making it a separate meeting.
Let actually ask the mayor, just in terms of kind of process, would it be possible for us to just host a public hearing and make it part of our, do we need a motion tonight to make that happen in two weeks?
No, I think you could put it on the public participation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just include it as part of our regular meeting in two weeks?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's fine. So if we could, and if you could include that in the agenda for our meeting two weeks from now, thank you very much.
No, I was just going to say, if we needed to make a motion on that, I certainly would, you know, bring that forward, because I think it's a great idea, too, it gives, it gives an opportunity for the public to weigh in, to see what type of qualities they would like to have, and what kind of direction they would like to see the school system go in, so I, that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
So can I ask on the 30th, then? Well, I guess, yeah, I'm trying to see what the, so based on our timeframe of when the Blue Ribbon Commission will be providing us, what's the date that they would be sending us their, their final recommendations?
The timeline that was established by the School Committee, it looks like on and around March 28th to the 30th, the Blue Ribbon Committee will be forwarding five names to the full, well, to the mayor, to the, to the School Committee.
So if we looked then, at perhaps April 6th, our School Committee, April 6th, could we devote that to our interviews? Yes?
Are we talking about during our regular meeting time?
On the timeline, the, it says on April 4th and April 7th, the School Committee will be conducting final interviews of candidates for the position.
Well, I think if we're making the decision to try and do it publicly in this room, that might be a challenge, to be able to book out two full nights. Yes, Ms. Laraba?
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to see if the Little Theater was available or the studio for those nights, since we've already got the dates on the calendar or on our timeline.
The will of the committee, yes, Ms. Doherty?
I just want to point out that I think we should try to do it in one night, because if you're a candidate that's interviewed on Tuesday, a candidate that's interviewed on Thursday has an advantage of hearing the questions and get, where if you do it all on one night, and I know that's how we did the last search, for that reason, you want to be fair to all candidates, and where they are going to be public, and they should be, I would just say, I think we should look for one night, I don't care if we try to do it at the Little Theater, you've got to also think about, we are heading into Knowledge Bowl, which is a big burden on the Channel 22, they do all that videotaping for those events, and we just really are not staffed at this point. I mean, I'd love to see that program grow, as my colleagues know. The thing about doing it on a Wednesday is we know we've got the chambers, we know we've got the cameras.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary, and then Assistant Superintendent?
Just, I think it's March 2nd, I think we can find out dates, you know, this week with June Cormier, for example, March 30th, we got a Finance Subcommittee set up right here in the chambers, so there are dates that are available for the chambers. If we really need to move the Finance Subcommittee to do interviews, we can do that, I mean, we got the room reserved right now, so that's not a big issue. But I think if we have the Superintendent Secretary, June Cormier, actually find out dates, and then we can really reconvene and be polled on what's available for us, as well as the chambers, there are dates available, and I think this is going to take, it's going to take top priority over everything. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy?
I was just going to suggest that if, if the committee does choose to hold the interviews on April 6th, instead of the regular School Committee meeting, that if you're going to have five people interviewed and have comprehensive interviews, then you would really need to think about starting around 5:30 even, starting early enough so that you could, you could get all of the interviews in.
Okay, well, then, if you could ask Ms. Cormier to please poll the committee, and we can, you know, determine what's the best way to go through it, and see if we can get coverage here earlier that evening, if we were looking at like a 5:00, 5:30 timeframe, and then we can check the other two dates, too, and see if the chamber is available, and go from there. I think one of the other key things that we should discuss is when we reach the point where these five candidates are in front of us, I think, again, we're working under some pretty dramatic time constraints, I think one of the ways we could get the most out of this interview experience would be if we take the time now to determine what we would like to see from these candidates, in terms of, in terms of written materials that may be particularly helpful for us, as we make these, as we craft our own questions and go into this process. For myself, those of you who've lived through this with me before know that I always ask the perennial question of the educational philosophy. I would like to make that request, that as we, as finalists are chosen and they're invited to come interview, that we ask them to provide the committee ahead of time with a written philosophy of education, that we can get ahead of time. I also think another critical area would be for them to share with us their, their approach and their successes and their, their goals in terms of parent engagement. Those are two kind of big overarching issues that I think that are, giving a candidate an opportunity to really think about and craft a written response would be helpful for us. And then we could also, you know, and open to conversations, if we wanted to ask for some proposal, some recent proposals that the candidates have written, if we wanted to ask them to share with us some past evaluations that they wanted to share with us, I think that might be a way for us to really be able to be well-prepared going into our interview session, and really have, I think, a deeper understanding of the candidates before they even step before us. So I would make in the form of a motion to the Subcommittee for at least those two, the philosophy of education and, you know, I guess, philosophy of parent engagement. Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye? Great. I don't know if there are any other recommendations from either the committee members here or the Subcommittee, for other written materials we'd like to ask them to bring with them or to provide us with beforehand? I mean, we'll traditionally, obviously, be getting their resumes, kind of a curriculum V tag, with a little more extensive information, but anything else we'd like to see included? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'd just like to add, I think that the idea of having some advanced stuff is really helpful, because as my colleagues know, the time goes by so quickly, you're lucky if you get in two questions each, and the more information we have in advance, and that really kind of rounds out the picture for us of the candidate, I think it's, you know, the more helpful it is in making our decision. I like the idea of a sample evaluation, because we do see that our evaluation process is so important. Certainly, it starts from the top down, but how our principals evaluate, our teachers and staff in the schools, and, you know, so, I mean, I don't want to overburden someone with three additional pieces, and maybe we could even put some kind of, you know, writing limitation, you know, like, let's say for your education philosophy, we're not looking for a five-page or a 10-page dissertation, you know, a couple of paragraphs, or, just to give them an idea that we're not, they don't have to write hundreds and hundreds of words, and certainly, we could fine-tune it as we go further, but I like the idea of a sample evaluation, I think it is very much a part of the job they do. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Laraba?
Just to clarify, are we looking for a sample of evaluation that they've done, or an evaluation that they've received?
I think we'd be, that they've done, yeah, so that we could judge the, yeah, their approach to evaluation, and, I mean, they'd certainly be able to provide any written, you know, kind of description of how they go through the process, I think that would be, maybe that's the kind of larger question we ask, you know, describe for us your approach to principal evaluations, and include, you know, some samples of your, of your documentation.
It is typical of superintendent searches and finalists to provide the committee with copies of reports to the School Committee, a couple of evaluations, so that the committee can get a feel for the type of work that the candidate has, has done. In terms of, you would really be looking at something you already have in your file in terms of an evaluation, and, you know, redacting the names and all of the identifying information, but those reports, those documents should be readily available.
I don't know if anyone has any other requests for additional information we'd like to see? Yes, Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly, with, through, through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. Cassidy, typically, what, now, what are we going to actually see in our packet, then, when we take, when we take a look at it? take, when we take a look at it?
It's my feeling that you'll be getting five complete submissions that were provided by each applicant.
That would include-
That go through, that go through the, the Blue Ribbon Committee. In addition, we'll include any attachments that were, that were just voted on by this committee. If I may add that this might be the time that we add our references into the, into the mix of course. We've, I know at the beginning of the process, we, we kind of put them off to the side, but it's my feeling if, if we've got five finalists, this is the time they need to, they need to be announced, and let their districts know that their, their intentions. So it's, if I may, I would throw references in here, and it's up to, up to the committee on the number of references, recent, old, it's, and maybe a supervisor or colleague, but if you can give us direction on when we ask these people, or these applicants, that would be helpful.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I think that's absolutely the time when we need to do it. So we'd be basically inviting our, our finalists for their final interviews, and we'd include a request for the information we've just delineated, and then asking them for their references at that same time. So in that, I mean, that would be a period of about a week between the time the Blue Ribbon Commission has given us their, their recommendations, and when we're ostensibly, I mean, if all goes according to plan, when we're doing our, our actual interviews. Would we have the, the capacity for the HR office to be able to conduct those reference checks in that period, in that short period of time, so that we'd have them before the interviews? It's, it's okay to say no. I'm just curious if you'd have the time.
The question is whether or not the HR Department can, and, or the administration associated with this committee checked those references. Of course, we can. The way we've been doing our searches for our principals and the headmaster, there is a greeter. They greet the applicant as before the interview and after the interview. We can certainly prepare all applicants at the, at the time of exit, that we will be, you know, at a moment's notice, we're going to be looking for this information, and have them be prepared to submit it. So that'll even cut down, or give us more time to do those reference checks.
Yeah, I think having them walk out with a list of exactly what they're going to be expected to provide would be very helpful. Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. The thing I wanted to add was, we also conducted site visits, and so if we're going to be interviewing a week after we get the names, but we don't have to have all those references checked within that week, do we?
No, we don't, but I'm thinking if we could have the references before we do the interviews, it could be helpful, and that would allow us, because I think the other thing we should ask as, as applicants are leaving, is for them to submit to us basically a, their recommendation for a site visit. I think that they should be prepared to plan that of, you know, we can say, I think clearly, who we'd like to see during a site visit. I know some of ours were more revealing or helpful than others the last time we went through it, and I think we'd need to be clear that we want to meet school committee members, that we want to meet some top administrators within their district, that we'd want to meet hopefully some parents, so that the candidates would be able to kind of have that thought, that they're going to need to pull together that kind of group for us to come down and, or down, over, up, wherever, to make a visit. Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Well, I guess my point was that we're not going to be making a decision until we've conducted the site visits. So if there was some overlap in the timing, if, if HR was still working on references while we're planning site visits, I, because as I recall, the last time, and I thought it worked well, we reported out on, you know, what we thought about the site visits. We had a conversation as, as a group. So there is, that's what I meant in terms of the references, that we don't have to know that at the time of the interview, because there is more information we'll be gathering.
No, I think that's, I mean, absolutely. If we weren't able to complete them, I don't think it's, it's certainly not the end of the world, but just kind of looking at best practice, if we could have them, and if the, you know, recognizing that it may not, you know, may be difficult. I think one of the things we can do to, to help that would be if we, as a committee, make a determination as to how many references we're actually looking for. I mean, I have, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking three, but I don't know if there's any other numbers in people's minds, and for me, I am looking for strictly professional references, whether it be a former employer, a former supervisor. I certainly want that one included as one of those three, and I don't know where else we might want to, how else we might want to define those. Yes, Ms. Larba?
I think the other thing to remember, you know, in terms of asking for somebody that they've worked for previously, that some of these people may have been in their current position for several years, so they may, we may be talking about someone that they worked for many, many years ago, so I don't know if that's going to be a concern as to how long ago that was, or if we want to just specify current, current employers.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, in my mind, as a superintendent certainly has supervisors, even if they've been in that position. I guess, at this point, they're going to be public, I mean, the names are going to be public, so it would be, we could certainly ask for their current supervisor as one of, you know, to find it that way, and then an individual for that one, you know, as that reference could be, whether it's a current superintendent, they could use a school committee member, or if it's someone who's in a, you know, a high-end central administration role, they could use their actual superintendent. So that would be one defined, you know, current supervisor, for lack of a better name. Yes, Ms. Larba?
And then, could we look for somebody that's more of a, at the same level colleague type? You know, if they're not the superintendent, then people that are on the same level. I'm not, I'm not really clear what we'd do with somebody who's already a superintendent, maybe ask for a neighboring superintendent that they've worked with. I'm just kind of throwing things out at this point, trying to figure it out.
I think that might be interesting to have a colleague or a peer be able to be one of the references. I don't know if that's, anyone have a concern about that? Mr. Conway?
I think it's usually left up to the individual, because if somebody's going for a particular job like this, I don't think that we have to actually, in my own opinion, I don't think we have to point out a specific category. It could be a colleague, somebody could be an Assistant Superintendent, it could be one of their fellow Assistant Superintendents that they've worked with for a number of years, it could be a principal. I think, again, as long as we get three, what I would call professional recommendations, I think that's, you know, I think that's important, instead of, instead of trying to put them into certain categories. I mean, I, I've never seen that before, where they're put into categories. I think it's left up to the individual, because when someone's going for a job of this, of this stature, and I think that we certainly should leave it up to them to pick the, the most appropriate three recommendations. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with it. I would say that we would like at least one of them, though, to be their current supervisor, because I do think that that's one that we absolutely need to have, but if the other two could be chosen-
No, that's, that's fine. I agree with that.
Okay. Is that, yeah. I guess we need to make a motion on that. So, motion, what can we all lump together now? The, that we'll be providing applicants with a list, we'll be asking for three references, one of which will need to be their current supervisor, and that the list we had just discussed previously of documentation that we'll be requesting will also be provided to them as they exit their first interview with the Blue Ribbon Commission. Form of motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Larba. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Okay. Any other questions, concerns on that topic? In terms of the site visit, I don't know how specific we want to get about who we'd want to see at the site visit. I mean, again, for myself, it would be important to talk to former or their current school committee members. I'd include parents, union representation, probably an administrator that they've been involved with, you know, a principal as opposed to another. Does anyone have any other kind of categories that we want to make sure get included for recommendations? Yes, Ms. Larba?
I just, just want to clarify that we'll be interviewing five people. Are we necessarily going to be going on five site visits, or are we going to pick our top three and do site visits? How will that part of the process work?
We can discuss that now. I don't know if we want to commit to it at this point. I mean, but I'm not sure. I mean, generally, we've gone through the first interview. As I recall, we had done our first interview, and then we had chosen the site visits, because we didn't, didn't visit all the, all the sites. We, we did, was it two?
By telephone.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we had done the telephone ones. So could we leave it to, we have our interview, and then we determine who we're going to make, at that point, who we want to investigate, and, not investigate, but find out more about, sorry, for site visits? Yes, Ms. Murphy?
In, in reviewing the documentation from the last search, I did notice that there were dates and times set up for site visits for all four candidates. Two candidates were in-house candidates, so those visits were set up here within the district, and there were two outside candidates, so you did do all four site visits.
I'm sorry, Ms. Conway?
And I, and I think that, you know, depending on where these individuals come from, too, that it probably is, it, it might not be possible for us to do a site visit, and I think that's why in the last, in the last search, I believe we did some by, by telephone, if I recall, didn't we?
Yeah, we went to Connecticut, but we have done that in the past.
But I, yeah, I know I-
From the prior search.
If somebody's from Florida or something, maybe I might, yeah, you're right. I'd volunteer to get down there.
So would the Subcommittee, and in turn, the full committee, be comfortable with waiting until we get to the, that point of the, having had our interviews, and then we'll make the determination of which site visits we're, we want to conduct, and how to most efficiently do that? Okay, great. I think those are the key things. I'd ask if the administration has any questions of us that you need help with, you know, any decisions you need us to make this evening to keep the process moving?
No, I think at this point, this is certainly helpful to us in terms of adding to the process and the timeline, and looking at what we'll be doing. We will speak with the Superintendent Secretary about finalizing a date for the interviews, and we'll have the interviews all in one day, one evening, here, in the council chambers, so we can, we can take care of that. I would anticipate that, you know, the next few weeks, Mr. Cassidy and I will be spending most of our time with the Blue Ribbon Committee, and helping them along with the process.
Excellent. I'd also say to my, my colleagues, too, for those of you who, you know, we can all remember going through this process, that, you know, taking some time to consider what our very limited questions are going to be able to be. It's a, you know, it's one of those things where, again, as Ms. Doherty had said, I mean, you get a chance at like two questions. That may even be more difficult when we talk about how, you know, getting five interviews in one, into one night, so we're all going to have to be very cognizant of that. I'd like to thank the administration for your support in going through all this. It's been incredibly helpful. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the mayor for his work and his staff's work in pulling together a Blue Ribbon Commission that I think certainly is, has taken on a very important charge, and I think are extremely well-qualified to represent a myriad of interests, which I think will help our, our process immeasurably, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
To my colleagues, if there are any other questions, concerns, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Larba. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.